Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to the council meeting Monday, April 26, 2021. Will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Volker.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Here.
Mayor Mahoney.
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for closing of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we welcome your... Well, before I start, I just want to make sure that Commissioners Volker and Commissioner Reed are able to hear me as I speak.
Yes, I hear you, Dan.
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Do you want me to speak louder?
But I will speak louder, Dan, no problem.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure. Please do not hesitate to interrupt me if I start to speak softer. But be very conscious that I'm... So, we have our packets this evening grabbing the numbers from our previous meeting on April 12. Any questions, comments, suggestions, otherwise it would seek a motion to approve the April 12 minutes.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing motion is second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Recognition, proclamations, appointments, presentations. We have this evening a proposed appointment of Dr. Richard Fong to the zoning board of Hills for a term who expires June 26. Dr. Fong is with us this evening. He is a longtime resident of the Village of Hillas Park, Kristen Surbeck, on his own board of Hills. Right here, a pure motion to point Dr. Richard Fong to the zoning board of Hills to a vacancy expiring June 1st, 2021.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing motion is second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Fong. We really appreciate your willingness to serve, and we look forward to looking at you on the zoning board of Hills. All right, we have a number of proclamations. I am not going to be done. But I will proclaim them.
Proclaim away.
Yes, to proclaim May 2nd to a date 2021, and this will first be... To proclaim May 16th, 2021, Arbor Day in the Village of Hillas Park. To proclaim May 16th and 22nd, 2021, public works week. To proclaim May 2021 as building safety month. To proclaim May 2021 as motorcycle awareness month. And finally, to proclaim May 2021 as older Americans month. Here is, we have the public hearing to consider the proposed budget for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2021, and then April 3rd, 2022. Prior to the final action of the budget, the corporate authorities shall hold at least one public hearing on the tentative annual budget which we are conducting at this time. The tentative budget was made available for quality inspection three days ago. Notice that this hearing was published in the regional newspaper on April 3rd, 2021. Now, I'll take CK, the finance director, to try to review the village, and I'll give a brief presentation of time for fiscal year 2022. Welcome, Alan.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present the fiscal year 2022 budget. The budget proposed tonight covers the time period May 1st, 2021, through and including April 30th, 2022. Before getting started, I do want to take the opportunity to thanks the village staff for all their hard work and dedication and efforts that led into creating this FY22 budget upper proposal tonight. So, the budget upper proposal includes a grant total of a little over $11 million. At $11,12,018, includes not only the budget for the village, but also the budget for the Hillas Park Police Pension Fund, which totals $10,851, and as well as the Hillas Park Public Library budget totaling $555,200. First thing we'll talk about tonight are the village's fund balances for fiscal year 2022. The village is fortunate, is in a strong position, and expects to have strong fund balances to the end of fiscal year 2022. For any audience who know what I've talked about, when I talk about fund balance, it's the monetary reserves, the monetary savings that the village has set aside for future use. It can be used in weather, even sort of economic uncertainty, provide unanticipated opportunities, provide unanticipated services, or simply just manage the ebbs and flows of the revenue cycle without any impact to those services. Village policy and simply general best practices within the government industry require the village to have at least 25% in reserves. And happy to report that the general funds and as well as the water sewer funds, so the key village funds, are expected to end 2022 with very strong fund balances above those 25% targets. On that, this is my major issue today. I do want to point out the fund balance for the Peter Lot Fund. Perhaps to no surprise, the fund balance within this fund has been decreasing since the pandemic. The 2022 budget predicts the Peter Lot Fund will have a fund balance of approximately $59,000. At the village's most recent audit, in 2020, the fund balance for the fund was approximately $130,000. Our main issue is simply revenue. Years past, it would not be uncommon for the village to get $90,000 in revenue between daily parking as well as monthly metro parking passes. And this fiscal year 2021, the village projects to obtain about $6,000 this year. Next year's budget is a little more optimistic at around $31,000, $32,000. Next area we'll talk about are some budgetary highlights within the general fund. Having reported the general fund is balanced, revenues exceeding expenses by $1,683. Do want to point out that the proposed budget tonight does not include any money as part of the American Rescue Plan approved by Congress and President Biden several weeks ago. The village staff is still looking over the guidance that was issued as part of that. Though there's going to be much more guidance coming out at the federal level in terms of how the village can get the money and how it can be used. Recent guidance suggested the village will be able to obtain from the federal government $585,000 under the program. Being running through the 2022 budget is a move or transition back to more normality. And what I mean by normality is things are moving closer to pre-pandemic levels. The recreation department is optimistic about being able to have a much more robust recreational program in 2022 than it was capable of this year. Tax revenues most impacted by the pandemic is the sales tax and places for heating taxes. Are anticipated to move much closer, I mean, quite that, but much closer to pre-pandemic levels. And also, the village staff is very optimistic about being able to bring back community events and festivals for next year. Just events as Hot Dog Day, Zoo in the Park, Center Tree Lighting, Concert at the Park, and Autumn at the Park. And in fact, the village staff is already in planning or pre-planning stages for many of these events for next year. Last point I want to talk about for the general fund are police pension contributions. Contributions for next year, this year's budget total $414,000 to the police pension fund. This is based on actuarial guidance from a third party. Those contributions are about 23% from last year and are up over 200% from 10 years ago. Moving into the water sewer funds, staff feel that revenues next year are going to come in strong. Most likely, you know, people are still going to be spending a lot more time in their homes than they were before the pandemic, even though, God, people are starting to get out and do more things. There should be more people at home thus using water and other services. And then both funds do consider in the budget a number of capital projects, engineering projects, as well as other overall system-wide maintenance expenses in the budget in order to keep, you know, both systems operating at high level as has been customary in the past. It will not only help keep the system operating effectively for next year, but help the system operate effectively for years to come. Last thing I want to talk about tonight is the village's capital plan for next year. The village's capital plan for next year includes a total of a little over $1.7 million, covering 32 projects for next year. Not all 32 projects, but I do want to talk about a couple of those projects. The village has budgeted $935,000 for the roadway improvement program to repair every day streets. I do want to point out that the village staff is still working on the exact timing and still to an extent of that project. Some other available projects include significant replacements to the fire hydrants within the NOI subdivision, purchase of two new police SUVs, discounted radio and video upgrades, as well as improvements to the village's green patio and sidewalk off of that portabel, simply to make that more functional and much more accessible. That was my presentation for tonight. If you mind answering questions, anybody else?
Thank you very much. That was very thorough.
Thank you.
Appreciate your analysis on this report. Now, do we want to now open it up to the public? Where would you like to have commissioners asking questions? I would suggest we have the commissioners asking questions and then open up for any public comment. Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner, I understand you have any questions about this. Obviously, the whole council and staff is integrally involved with this exercise, perfectly grounded. So, you know, this is not the first time that anyone has seen this budget or hasn't studied it. Any other questions from the council? That's done.
I just can't find my third little improvement page. It's driving me nuts, if I sit here looking, do you know what page number it's in?
It's my part.
It was, right? I knew it said it.
It's on the second page at the top.
That's why I didn't get that part.
If that's the police department, I'll call.
Oh, did I pull it? Oh, because I pulled it out already. Thank you. Yes, I know, it's pretty much the same. Yes, exactly. Exactly. You know, this is, I'm really happy with how everything just set out. And I'm excited that we've been able to stockpile some money so we can do a meaningful, good old road work that's been needed. But we always get a better budget done with more money to make service. So, I'm glad that we're at that point this year, so, thank you.
Anyone else from the council, any questions? Alex, who's here?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple comments. Hopefully, my voice is going to make a call.
It is.
I want to thank the staff for putting together this budget. I call it a pandemic budget. It doesn't do us out a lot of money. Man, there are a lot of things that I really did want to comment on. One is the road program. I don't want to do it there. You know, I went down, came back home, I really did drop out of the village much. Since I retired. I owe a apology to everyone that did this out of my fault. This is not a slight to Commissioner Valdez or to Director Shabala. I'll go with our best, okay? Because we did face a disaster. And I am glad that we were able to swallow this aside and at least begin a road program. I've entered years by blind and good reason. Need to fix our old residential residence. Have a boost with God and not hurt themselves. The second thing is the sound system. I am so grateful that we decided to make the sound system. I could not hear a word that was said regarding the consultation, and it wasn't because of the ability of this the XCA, the sound system is horrible. It's just bad, and I'm glad we're bringing somebody in so that they're not becoming a disaster. But having now to hear those that are going to blow all the stuff, thank you. Let us look forward to respect you. And glad you got the program started. As a conclusion, it's a standard and a good start at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else from the council want to make your comment on the budget? I'd like to open it up to the public, where they can all, regarding the budget. Anyone from the public? Like to make any comments about the public? Perfect. Also, do we have online comments or email comments?
We, I'm not aware that we have any, sorry.
All right, then, I'm sorry, bear, is it time to close our public hearing?
You can just close the public hearing, or you can ask for a motion to close the public hearing and take a vote on it so that there's a time and a minute as to when it was closed.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Second.
Hearing motion is second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
That's in motion carries. So... Take this to the consent committee. All items under consent, general team, or have been brought forward of the board of commissioners. Item A, to pass a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the common highway code of the 20th cleared from April 26, 2021 to April 3rd, 2022, in the amount of $537,200. Resolution states the village is appropriated with $537,200 for the fuel and tax funds for the purposes of maintaining streets and highways for 100%. Item B, to approve payment block invoices on the law listed April 26, 2021, in the amount of $75,234 in assets. Do I hear a motion to approve this at this time?
Salute.
Second.
Hearing motion is second, will the clerk please call the law?
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. And as the whole business, we brought the council. Board commissioning community recommendations. We have item to approve, London's 2021, dash bottom, London's approving corner side yard and rear yard, setback variations for 12100 Southeast 6th Avenue. The state's village council approves and adopts findings from our recommendations to the zoning board of Hills for former side yard setback variation and rear setback variation to prevent construction of garage additions to the rear of the structure. The required corner side yard setback is 50 feet. The applicant is proposing a quarter of side yard setback of 26.33 feet. And the required rear yard setback is 50 feet. The applicant is proposing a quarter of rear yard setback of 20 feet at the property. Common law passed 12100 Southeast 6th Avenue Hillas Park. Commissioner Reed, read. Um, this ZDA.
Sure, there's not really much to add. In February of this year, the applicant filed seeking a variation, as noted by the bill, from the requirements of Chapter 1068, Act 02F, side yard 1036, Act 02G, rear yards, to permit construction of garage addition to the rear of the structure. The required corner yard setback is 50 feet. The applicant is proposing a corner yard setback of 26.23 feet. The required rear yard is 50 feet. The applicant is proposing a setback of 20 feet at the property. Common law, Act 12100, 86th Avenue Hillas Park. Then the, 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 April, the evidence, the application of the U, there were no objections to the third application. The application fits with them. The project notes that said, "Hear, A.D." So, we have recommended that the ordinance as separate in your back has to be approved. And this is a method of assistance since where the child just take a trip around hole. It is a legal and valid property. It does, it must have got acquired to be changeable in the code for R1A1, um, 1A1. So, obviously, we cannot apply those standards to a parcel property that was less than 1A. So, this is not a delay of overview of the ZDA. I certainly don't know what it was supposed to do, and unless there are any questions, then I can motion that I would refer until certain questions are answered there in back harmony.
I have none. Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Commissioner, continue.
The owner to approve ordinance, 1011, that ordinance for the corner yard yard and rear yard setback variations to permit construction of a garage addition to the exit of Central Family Building at the property, common law, as 12100, 86th Avenue Hillas CK.
Second.
Hearing motion is second, will we call?
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Vlachos.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Just like the applicant, applicant were going through the process. I didn't ask if the applicant is here tonight. I believe he is, he is. If you want to say anything, you're, you're due so. But it, it passed, so when you get to yes, you don't have to say anything.
I just want to thank you guys for letting us go through this and taking pride in the village. We appreciate it.
We appreciate you investing in our village. We're happy to have you here, and thank you for coming through the process.
Thank you.
All right, next item, information updates. Public Works and Streets Recreation Report.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have nothing on the agenda, just a few announcements. First Hillas Park is joining the regional tree planting initiative. The initiative will plant at least 340 new trees in the Chicago region in 2021 to build a healthier urban forest. That, involving the seven county region and all 50 city of Chicago wards, is being spearheaded by the Chicago Region Trees Initiative, a partnership with more than 200 organizations taking coordinated action to improve the health, diversity, and equitable distribution of trees in the Chicago area. The Village of Hillas Park is celebrating Arbor Day on May 16, and a vault sycers will be planted as part of the regional tree planting initiative at the Hillas Park Library. If you have questions or curiosities about the planting of trees for the community initiative, you can visit chicagorti.org/treesforcommunities. Next, speaking of trees, if you cut some branches down and you need them shipped, this is when shipping will start. Public Works will begin on the west side of the village on Monday, May 3. Branches should be placed out by 7:00 a.m. on May 3. Once the chipper services your street, the chipper will not return until the next shipping date. Please see complete list of the dates and the regulations on the public works under the Department of Public Works. True branch pickup. Very self-explanatory, you can find answers to any questions you have, but Monday, May 3, you have the branches out there. With the cut end facing the streets, make it easier for the guys to grab them up and throw them into the chipper. This Saturday, we had good litter day on the heels of Thursday, and it was a really great success. They had so many scouts turn out to help out and other people that aren't scouts, but picked up a lot of garbage, saw a lot of orange bags all around the village for public works to pick up. So, I thank everyone that participated in it. And just remember that good litter day does not have to be one day a year. You can pick up garbage any day of the year, and please don't litter in Hillas Park because our community is beautiful, and why would we want to make it look ugly with like paper and files and stuff everywhere? And lastly, we also had our chili cook-off two weeks ago, and we had 15 cooks out for the first chili in the park, our first outdoor event of the season. And Tom Wahi, who was People's Choice, donated this place money back to the women's club, who happened to serve refreshments that day. But they want to thank all the cooks from guessing that came out to, and all the people that came out to sample chili and give their opinion. The turnout may not have been as large as it's been in the past, but we are working our way up into going out to events again. And so, hopefully, everyone will feel comfortable more as the season goes on, as we have Concert in the Park coming up, and Hot Dog Day, and Mugi in the Park, and then Autumn in the Park. So, please check the website for dates, so you can put it on your calendar so you can come out and enjoy the community events that we put on for you. And I conclude by a vote.
Thank you very much. It was a very fun chili cook-off. I know, I understand, you know, the village wasn't sure. It really was the first chili event. So, what I heard from the cooks is they hadn't seen one another in a long time. They were excited to be at Hillas Park. But because we weren't sure how many cooks we were going to have until days before, it was really hard to promote this event not knowing whether we were going to have one. So, sorry if we did not get the information out to residents about the middle of the chili cook-off. It was a lot of fun. I always say a lot of fun. They're a good natured group, the Chili's X-Men, and it went off very well for one of our first events in a long time.
Well, thank you for being there, since I could not attend. However, my husband was a judge, and he said, seriously, like, at least two thirds of the chilis were like really good, and judging was a difficult task. So, you know, people should definitely put it on their radar for the next time.
Thanks to Tom for always volunteering for the, he must love chili.
He loves eating.
So.
That's it?
Building and public property. Commissioner Reed?
Many of the most valuable steps in the creative process is having the work inspected by the village inspectors. And the inspections have protected family by ensuring all work is done safely and according to the code. These inspections can use any work the homeowners may experience, whether in a car improvement project, eliminating spurs, and preventing extensive reworking. The work is not considered complete until all final inspections are passed. The building department processed twenty permits from April seventh through the nineteenth, resulting in nine thousand three hundred seventy thousand twenty six in progress. Eighteen inspections were concluded during the fall which period. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. And thanks to my corrector cross for just noting on our report the comparison to prior years. That's helpful. I think we're all seeing it in town, but our permanent fees are significantly up over the prior year. I think that shows that people are investing in their homes and investing in the community. And that is good. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Polk.
Don't say. Good evening, thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the activity report for the Hills Park Police Department from the twelfth of April through the twenty fifth of April. Two thousand and eighty eight calls per service were running about a thousand a week. Tell people are out and about because the ticket rate is going up. Actually, the ticket number is going up. The rate's about the same. Forty two adjudication tickets and twelve additional tracking tickets, twenty one written and twenty verbal warnings. Took nineteen case reports. Unfortunately, had arrested two adults and a juvenile, impounded a single vehicle, performed twelve senior checks, and twenty three citizen assists. So that's what the Hills Park Police has been up to for the last two weeks. A couple of quick announcements. So now that there are more people out and driving, we want to remind people that the driving is a singular activity, and we'll be out looking for distracted driving enforcement issues, texting, using a handheld cell phone, and then other things in this paragraph that I just can't believe people do while they're driving in the car. Uh, has to do with makeup, nails, hairbrush. The extra enforcement is meant to promote safety. The officers on the campaign will be monitoring the roads in Hills Park around the clock. We're just looking for compliance. So again, uh, your cell phone, if you really need to text or call, pull off into a safe place and don't do it while you're driving. And then a couple of other quick announcements with the onset of the warmer weather. We've got more people on the roads. That will include pedestrians and bicyclists. Saw a fair number of people out on the Cal Sac today. Uh, people are walking, they're walking around. Uh, drivers will see more pedestrian and cyclist traffic. So again, we encourage you guys to keep your head out of swivel and be looking for those people that may not have been out when the weather was minus twenty.
How many have a visitor come about?
If you must.
Um, so one of my pet peeves around town is when I see walkers on streets, drivers clipping by them a foot away at the speed. If there's someone on the side of the road, slow down. It's only makes sense. Respect people who are pedestrians on the roads and give them a wipe or slow down. Just make this a pedestrian a place to be.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, obviously, we don't have very many sidewalks in the park, so if you're going to walk around and you're not going across country in the forest reserves, you're going to need to be on the asphalt. So again, respect the people who are out there walking around. If you get to your destination a fraction of a second later because you saved someone's life, you should reward yourself. Also, I want to mention that the Hills Park Police Department, once again, is uh, excuse me, giving youngsters free bicycle helmets. Uh, the helmet giveaway program is a partnership with the medical profession in order to reduce and most of the time prevent child head injuries. So again, if you have a child or if you have a grandchild or someone who acts like a child, you can fit the child's helmet. Uh, to drop by the station during normal business hours. They are different sizes depending on how large your child's head is, and we'll be happy to uh, pitch you up and send you on your way. Um, a couple of other quick things. Uh, putting on my other hand is the public safety officer of the village. So all of the mass inoculation sites in Cook County, and with the exception of the United Center, are now open for walk-in appointments for COVID vaccines if you so desire to have one. So you do not longer need an appointment. I was at the Tinley Convention Center earlier today, and you could have literally parked your car, walked in, gotten immunization, and walked out. So it's much different than it was two months ago when people were scrambling for appointments. If you're on a list somewhere and you have some desire to get immunized before whoever's the list keeper is called you, uh, you're more than free to go to any of the mass immunization sites. They will also make your second appointment um, at the time that you get your first appointment. So that's a big piece of news. Everyone in the state of Illinois who's over with sixteen years of age or older is now eligible to receive a COVID nineteen vaccine. So essentially, other than age, there are no restrictions. Um, while I'm talking about second doses, uh, there has become a prevailing uh, practice in the community that one and done is enough. That's true for the J and J vaccine, but the uh, mRNA vaccines, the the other two, the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines require two immunizations to achieve the best effect. So this is not the time to skimp on your vaccines, especially since they're coming at no cost to be vaccinated. Um, uh, if you have any concerns about vaccines or you just want to talk or you want to talk through the process, you can always give me a call here at the village. If I don't answer the phone, you can give me a message. I get those. Or you can send me an email at D Polk at Hills Park dot org. Um, I believe that concludes our report.
Thank you, Commissioner, for all the current vaccines. It's critical that you get these vaccines. You're not just protecting yourself, you are protecting.
Yep.
You are protecting those around you, including your family as well.
So I'm sorry, let me add one more thing. Um, this whole vaccine hesitancy, and I don't really want to get into a political debate about choice, et cetera, et cetera, but it's important to know, I talked about this two weeks ago, you're going to hear more and more discussion about so-called variants, which are viruses that are mutated to a different structure. These viruses don't just wake up one day and say, you know what, I'm kind of bored with the way I look. I think I'll mutate. They need a human to be infected in order to be able to carry the process of mutation forward. So if for no other reason, you don't want your grandfather or anybody else to get infected with a mutated strain, which generally are more infectious and in some cases can be um, cause more issues in terms of hospitalization, it's a good idea just to get immunized so you don't become that patient zero in which that mutation occurs. So those mutations don't happen in a vacuum. They need a human in order to be able to reproduce. Thanks for bringing that up. I forgot about the other thing, Commissioner.
I really appreciate it. I know we're working hard. Trying to find ways to pay this part doesn't give vaccinated. It looks like that channel is a lot easier right now versus.
Yeah, I get a call, I say Tinley's down there right on. Go now.
I went to Manson and took my sixteen, my seventeen year old. It was like you said, in, in, out, out, you know.
Yeah, it's different. I mean, I I wish I could say it's different because everything is really better. It's different because way fewer people are getting vaccinated than we thought. So when you look at the total number of vaccines that have been shipped, et cetera, et cetera, what the projections were, about somewhere around forty percent of adults in Illinois have gotten our first dose. About twenty five percent of those people have gotten their second dose. So there's a huge fallout between the first and the second. And you know, I mean, I could keep going, sorry. Uh, this idea that somehow we're going to get to quote her immunity unquote, uh, it would be great. You need somewhere around eighty, maybe eighty-five, maybe a little bit more percent of the entire population to be fully immunized in order to be able to get to so-called her immunity. We ain't anywhere near that. And my guess is we won't be. So take that for what it's worth. Be the one who does.
And younger folks are are wild of the attitudes that I'm not going to get real sick, so I'm not going to get vaccinated.
And and that may or may not be true. So the surge that we've seen, at least in Illinois, and certainly in Michigan and other states around the United States, has occurred largely in middle to underage people. So our first surges where we had a lot of people in the hospital and people unfortunately losing their lives tended to be the older population with medical complications. And we don't hear very much about the old, I don't know, twenty six year old who's perfectly fine, gets COVID and dies. I mean, that doesn't make the news. But those are the people who are currently afflicted. And kids are still a big unknown in a relatively large reservoir of the virus because fortunately for the children, not so much for the diagnostician, they generally don't get sick. But it doesn't mean they can't pass the virus on to somebody else who will get sick. So again, this is complicated and I don't mean to uh, to overwhelm people with too much information. If you have questions, if you got issues, you want to talk, call, email, I'm more than happy to talk to anybody and watch more information.
Sorry to delay work, but I think it's just a really important issue. So I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Our council finances report. Commissioner Poblas?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. If you have one item that you can give it to me. In two and one, it's a vacuum, we have a budget for fiscal year under the first thirty of twenty twenty two for the better of the Phil's Park, for family owner. The only state for better to adopt any proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two in the amount of that immunity, twenty two and eighteen. Um, presented tonight was a public hearing concerning the annual budget for the fiscal year of twenty twenty two, which will begin on May the first and end on April the thirtieth, twenty twenty two. State statute requires that the village council adopt the budget prior to the beginning of fiscal year to which it applies. The budget is a result of many long hours and meticulous work. We would like to thank the department directors and village staff staying within the spending guidelines produced this budget. The village general fund budget is balanced. Additionally, all village funds are expected to not only achieve, but significantly exceed their fund balance target. We are pleased with that fiscal year twenty twenty budget for the village of Hills Park, and I would like to make a motion for the adoption of the budget for the year twenty twenty. Twenty twenty two, sorry.
Second.
Pairing motion in a second. Over to the board, please.
Commissioner Poblas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moll, the twelve terms?
Yes.
Commissioner Pol?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And that concludes my report. I have no announcements to make. I just want to again thank all the directors and the staff for the wonderful job that they did bringing this budget in as they did. And and I think that's a pretty uh, a pretty difficult thing to do, and I think our staff did a heck of a job. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So that leaves my report. I have a couple of things that I'd like to discuss. First of all, just related to the budget, I would like to thank the village council staff, especially our planning director, the local manager, Alton, for the excellent work preparing this year's fiscal two thousand twenty two budget. As I mentioned earlier, uh, this is a task that takes many months and involves basically nearly every employee in the village. So this document specifies anticipated anticipated revenues to receive expenditures in the next fiscal year, beginning on May first. Past years were difficult. When the pandemic hit last year, the village took immediate steps to reduce and eliminate expenditures, including diverting all non-essential payable purchases, place the hiring freeze on certain positions, place a wage freeze on all full-time, part-time, non-munually positions, reduce and eliminate non-virginalcy overtime, reduce seasonal haul, and defer several other purchases. Several other cost-cutting strategies were at the ready should they have been needed. We did, all of us were remaining available to our residents. The village's village's government never stopped working for you, providing the high quality services that are expected from the village. We'd like to have some of the anticipated expenditures contained in the budget the council just adopted. And as previously noted, the budget contains nine hundred and thirty five thousand in motor repair money. We know that our village networks on the streets can be repaired. Commissioner Reed alluded to that fact. Since two thousand and eleven, the village spent one point four three million on motor projects, with the largest previous single year program being nine hundred and forty thousand. This nine hundred and thirty five thousand represents another step in fixing our infrastructure needs. Those council and I are working on a plan to invest another three million over the next four years to fix and repair our streets. We took one of our first steps here in March ninth, two thousand twenty, the village council adopted ordinance setting for the local motor fuel tax. The proceeds of the local motor fuel tax will be the main funding source for our ongoing motor. In addition to an enhanced street program, this budget calls for over five hundred thousand to be spent on maintaining and upgrading villages existing in water and sanitary sewer system. We're also excited to bring back the new special allowance that the council last year due to the pandemic. Just last week, as I mentioned, the village hosted the Chillicothe Park event in June will be a concert in the park, July will be Hot Dog Day, August will be a town meeting in the park, and September will see the tenth anniversary of the October autumn festival. Village councils or village committees now maintain village services to enhance them. From a revamp of website and E News to enhancement trolling, all matters to serious residents, we are far from finishing making improvements. This next year, we'll see a video and sound system for the village council room, thank goodness, to help our community to better stay informed. We are working to be able to do more transactions online, to be making payments, and we'll be building a patio on the side of the house to make the village more accessible to all individuals, including those with mobility constraints. Village council and I here to serve you and your residents. Please try to take any one of us to let you know your thoughts, and you use the internet connection. Thank you. So just one other item uh, that I want to bring to everyone's attention. I don't talk a lot about organizations that are involved in as the mayor of our town. One of them is the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus was started about twenty years ago by Mayor Richards Daly. Uh, their effort to bring all mayors in the Chicago metropolitan area together to help influence legislation affecting municipalities to develop best practices. There's a whole environmental uh, aspect to Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. And anyway, um, it it's been uh, an excellent organization of each borough for our village. I currently am on the executive board, an officer of Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Uh, Mayor Lord Lightfoot is very active in working with the caucus on various matters. Uh, we have conference calls on weekly basis due to the beginning of pandemic, and City Chicago was sharing all kinds of information and metrics with us. We're open to plans. is sharing all kinds of information metrics with us, reopening plans. It's, in any event, last, this past week, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus started a campaign to make our state citizens aware of an issue that will be coming up before the state legislature in passing this budget this year. In the 1970 Constitutional Convention, the state and Illinois municipalities came to an agreement that municipalities would not levy an income tax on its residents. And in exchange for that, the municipalities would share it through what's called a local government distributed about ten percent of state income tax revenues. So, great idea, well thought out in that, you know, the cost of yet another level of government administering an income tax, it's just, it's so much easier to have the state have an income tax and to share revenues with the municipalities rather than municipalities implementing their own system. I've seen it, I'm from Michigan, Detroit, I don't know if they still have an income tax, they used to have an income tax, I worked in the city, drove people out of the city. It's not workable. The problem with the state of Illinois is that while the agreement in 1970 was ten percent for the revenues, because the state has had such difficulty in the last ten years especially of budgeting, they keep on saying, well, we know we had this agreement with you, but we're going to take part of this local distributor fund because we need it to balance our budget. Well, what they don't understand is if they take that away, we have to, and the local governments are typically the most lean, the most efficient, well, we have to pay for our police officers and our public works department. There's not a lot of that to trim, so what do we have to do? We have to raise revenues elsewhere. So that comes to play in your property taxes and other charges they can raise. So it's like robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I'm mentioning this this evening because your Illinois legislatures react very well when the public gets engaged about an issue. This is an issue that's important to our village and all voters across the state, and I would like, and maybe we can put something on our website, some information about this that allows our residents to contact their state legislators about this issue. So again, we'll put some information on our website that highlights this issue, but the state is, you know, our LGTF, as we call it, was a ten percent, it's now about six point X percent, and they want to take another ten percent out of that. So we'd like to have them not try and evade what the promised revenue to municipalities to try to build their campaigns with their budgets. And I don't think I could talk anymore with this mask on, so I will, this clerk right here, here.
I have a question.
And if the van has no report? Announcements? I do have some here. The plant commission will hold a special meeting on Wednesday, May 5th, at seven p.m. that considers the volume of assets. PC 2021-02, sorry, the owner of 9109 West 120th Street has requested approval to subdivide a plant in an existing tax divider parcel containing forty-four thousand five hundred thirty-three point two square feet of ladder, and is also requesting a nine point nine six inch variance of 150-foot lot width, as recorded by section 1260-8.02C lot sizes in carbonase. PC 2021-03, village of Payless Parkers requesting a tax amendment to section 1282.09H to eliminate the lighting regulations found in the building organized in verse, government development code chapter 1476, optional type. PC 2021-04, we submit to section 1020.02C2 of municipal code, an application provided by the village of Payless Park, requesting the village to vacate both ads 113th Street, 85th Avenue, Holmes Avenue, and two 16-foot public alley gracesways that are adjacent to the following village own properties. 115-000 South 85th Avenue, 8501 West Front 83. 115-05 South 85th Avenue, 1105 South, 11507 South 85th Avenue, 11500 Holmes Avenue, 11502 Holmes Avenue, 11508 Holmes Avenue. And 8400 Cal Sac Road, Payless Park, Illinois, allocation verb request indicated by your lies, and previous to note parcels to be consolidated considering one lot of property. Any one from the audience that would rest at the council this time? Hearing some of those requests, I would seek a motion to adjourn this meeting at this time. Will adjourn?
Second.
Will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Mooney, go. Yes. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Poblawis?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you all, and good evening.
You say about there.